Community sewer system had never worked and never was put operational. And so we had sewers running into our, we'll just say, a small branch in a floodplain area down a hill and then, so we had to use a combination of some health department ordinances and then also file, try to file an action in magistrate court in realm against the property. It worked out so that these, and the people kept saying, no, we were complaining to the clients that we got, we were tied to a sewer line. And one thing led to another before we got them all, we got them served, the husband and wife, they split and then went one direction, one went the other. Couldn't find one, or few serviced in Savannah somewhere. It got to be a real, a real do, but the one thing that finally helped us out was that they quit paying the mortgage on this piece of property and they foreclosed. And once they foreclosed, then of course we cut the, you know, the water and the power got cut off. And then the voyage company came back and wanted to turn the power on and the water back on and we were going, no, we're not gonna let you, we're not gonna give you a C.O. for the, for the, for the property and turn the water and authorize the power to cut back on until such time as you put a second tank in. Guess, guess what? You have a second tank in just like that. So you gotta, you gotta explain things to them. But, you know, you see here what we're, what we're doing where these are just two. And there's not to say that every building in the county is, is that way. But what our problem is, we've hindered with, with a mechanism for addressing issues like this. I brought an ordinance to the commission in 2001 and it was very similar to this. It was based on the Georgia code in existence at that time, which I get to in a minute. But the, the ordinance, let me just put this way, they were not, the commissioners were not very receptive. I got, you know, five blank stares coming back and...
What was the objection?
Well, one was agricultural, but there was an exception in the Georgia code. There was an exception in the ordinance that agricultural buildings are excluded. You know, that you got an open house, you put your store hay in it, or you store that stuff, all that is legitimate. Agricultural use is exempted.
Exempted in this ordinance?
Yes, exempted in this ordinance and exempted by state statutes as well. There was also some, some concern that maybe the county was going too far in telling people what they could and couldn't do with their property. So it didn't, it never, that was the only thing. We discussed it just a few minutes at a work session and it never went to further. So, but we've been struggling with this for, you know, quite some time. And this building ordinance, unsafe building ordinance, I think, five different mechanisms forced to do it. Georgia code authorizes, in the summary in front of you, I just kind of jotted down the deck, authorizes the, utilize the authority delegated to counties by Georgia law and provides that you can come in and abate these nuisances in magistrate court. And the, provides a relatively quick method to do so. The, this ordinance that you have here, it follows the Georgia code almost verbatim. There are a couple of things I've added to it, such as administrative search warrant and a couple of other things. But it's very, very similar to the city of Lagrange ordinance, the city of Hogansville. We represent both of those. Jim, Jeff Todd is the city attorney for Lagrange and Hogansville. And we, he has used, utilized these. He developed a set of forms that are very easy to use and has a procedure down that is, is very, very workable. But what this ordinance will do will create a new, a new article under your ordinance that's called unsafe buildings. It's under, you know, under section five, I think it is, in the public safety code. Now, the ordinance, like I said, is based on the state statute. And it looks at, is directed to four things. Dwelling structures that are unfit for human habitation. And you certainly, these, these before you here today aren't unfit for... Two, unfit for commercial or industrial or business use and not compliance, in compliance with various codes. Or is vacant used for drug crimes. So I hope we don't have any of that in Harris County, but that's not to say we don't or won't. And then, or this structure is an endangerment to public health and safety because of unsanitary or unsafe conditions. And those are the four, four things it gets, gets, or is directed to. And it's, it's anything used for, you know, human habitation, commercial or, or business use. And includes any pertinent structures such as outhouses attached, you know, garages. It includes a hundred square foot exception. You've got buildings that you can add on to. There is a specific exclusion for agricultural purposes. It appears in page three, on dwellings, buildings and structures. That is a, all of these definitions are pretty much straight out of the code, the Georgia code. But dwelling shall not mean any farm or any building or structure located on a farm or any agricultural facility or other building and structures used for production, growing, grazing, harvesting, storage or processing crops, livestock, poultry or other farm products. Very, very specific.
Question. There's a building down on 27th that burned, a home that burned. It's been sitting there for a while, caving in. But they have now hooked and allowing cattle to come up there and feed around that. And will that be considered a farm structure or...
I don't think so because that, that, the purpose of that was a dwelling house before it burned.
Yeah, yeah, it was a dwelling.
Yeah, right. Now, if they, they tear it down and build a, build a shed in there.
That's different.
You know, to put hay in it, feed that livestock, that's fine. You know, dilapidate it.
So it would have it include that type thing or vermin?
Yeah.
Okay. What about storage buildings?
Storage buildings?
The residential?
Yes, yes.
From all the ordinance?
Yeah, it would include those, but you know, if, because the dwelling says any, or intended to be so used includes any outhouses, improvements or apartments belonging there to, or usually enjoyed there with...
Maybe outhouses, they're outbuildings.
It says outhouses in that, I don't think they're using that in our...
Should be having...
In the outhouse way we, we think about it. I mean, it should be outbuildings and those types of things. Accessories structures start falling in, you know, or danger to somebody.
Yeah, outhouses falling, that can be a real danger.
Yeah. Falling, yeah. Home you're in, you know, you can fall in. But it, it includes apartment structures and there's no real definition of that in the code, but you gotta use your, your common sense a little bit with it. Agricultural buildings, like I said, are excluded. Now, magistrate court has jurisdiction and you could, you can, and the magistrate court has the authority under Georgia law to abate a nuisance. They do not have the, the authority to, to provide any injunction relief. And you can only get, as jury knows, an injunction relief only when you don't have an adequate remedy of law. And, and abatement is, is an order of law. There's a case law to back that up. And so the magistrate court has the authority to do this. They don't have a, any authority to join somebody, but they can issue an order telling so and so to repair the property in so many days and/or, and/or demolish the property in so many days. It, it's called an in realm action, you know, against, against the property. The instance I talked about a few minutes ago with, with, with the people in the, have a second tank. And we filed that as an in realm action incident, but just having to rely on the general case law and, and the general statutes. This provides it's in realm, it's against the property itself. Sometimes you can't find the heirs. Sometimes you've got somebody that, that died and then, you know, you might chase them down in, you know, Atlanta, New Orleans, Chicago, you know, if you don't know who the heirs are. And nobody wants to fess up when it comes down to that, that time, the heir property. So it, it goes against the property itself. And that's where the, this statute really provides some, some, some relief.
Now, how do you enforce it?
Could you have a lien or a list pending?
Yes, that's where it's hit, you know, to have a list pending that is enforceable, just like a tax sale against the property. But, you know, the, the, you know, in, in one of these two we got right here, the shillelaghs people won't respond. We don't know who this one is. Same way we've had with Lagrange and Hogansville. Sometimes you don't know, you know, who the who it is. Somebody, sometimes mama may be in a nursing home in non-complimentous, you know, in, in other state. You've got somebody that, a son or somebody that's supposed to be taking care of the property. Whether he, you know, you gotta have somebody to go against. And if you can get him served, yes, you can serve him anyway. But the idea is to take an in realm action against the property itself, even if you can't figure out who the owner is. Because if you can't, you know, can't figure out who the owner is on, on some of them, you couldn't, you had to go against the owner only, you know, you never would be able to abate the, the nuisance. But it is filed by a, a started, the enforcement procedures is initiated by, according to this ordinance and according to the statute, the director of community development, or whomever you delegate. And the way I drew this is the director of community development or his designate, which could be building inspector, could be court enforcement inspector, officer, could be the director himself, or you appoint somebody that handles dilapidated buildings. You know, you see that in that, that building, he sees that building and he'd say, you know, and it does not comply that he can initiate the action. Also, the code section, the Georgia code section, as well as this ordinance, says that it can be filed or instituted upon at least, you know, a complaint of five residents of unincorporated Harris County. So you get five people that live on a road or neighborhoods, that, that road is, that house is, is unsafe or, you know, the dilapidator fits the definition. Then, once they come in and complain about it, then, then they, the community director, officer, director of community development can initiate the process. I know you don't want to go to this, this drama, but Lagrange, when they first adopted the ordinance several years ago, divided the, the city into quadrants. A couple of number of buildings that were having, we had problems with, quadrants. And they went through each quadrant and looked at every house, every structure in that quadrant. You know, at least from the, from the street standpoint. And, and the ones that were obvious, they started on those folks. Now, whether you do that or not, that's, that's up to you. That's probably more, more than you want to, want to know what to do. But, you know, the, but you, once you have determined the, the building, you have to, if there is a possibility, then you have to go on to the property to look at it under your zoning ordinance and your code enforcement office, all the ordinance, you can go on to the, on to the property. Now, this is kind of skipping forward a little bit. We've got one of these two that, that here that we're looking at, these shillelaghs that, you know, we don't know who the residents are. And, and, you know, we're kind of a little hesitant just to go into the, into the building. A magistrate court has the inherent authority to, to issue a, an administrative search warrant. This ordinance will give the inputs, the in writing that the, that the magistrate court can, upon application of the county, issue an administrative search warrant for the purpose of going, going on to the property to make, or going into the property to make an inspection. Sometimes you try to go in and make an inspection on the property and, on a piece of property and, and the, either the homeowner or the tenant says, no, I'm not letting you in. So where do you know what's on the inside? So...
Who would she be able to authorize to access?
The director of community development or, or code enforcement officer, whomever he delegates to go in and look at it to see, make that inspection, find out, one, does it beat the code? You know, is, you know, what are the, what's the conditions on the inside? That one, those pictures I passed around, I think the door was open, so you, you know, you could get in there without any problems. But sometimes they, they're locked up or, or you don't know who to call. And that's where one of these is and we're a little, little bit hesitant, you know, just to go breaking in the, in the house. But, you know, it's not criminal in nature, so therefore we're looking for, looking for an administrative search warrant. And that would give them the right to do that. And, you know, we probably do that before we brought, brought the action. Certainly before they brought the action, you know, you, the, we don't want to bring these unless we absolutely have to, the community developer that I would get in touch with and notify, try to notify the people that, that are, that have some interest in the property that it does not meet building code's standards. It's unfit for human habitation, you know, whatever the case may be. And give them a, you know, suggest that they do something about it. And it's only those that don't want to do anything that we have, have trouble with. But file a petition to magistrate court and as soon as you file a petition, you can go ahead and file a notice of list pending and against the property. After hearing in magistrate court where you, you introduce evidence as to the possible ownership, condition of the property, you know, what it looks like, what it would cost to fix it up, the relative value of the property. Then if the court finds that it is in fact unsafe or unfit, if the court finds it's unfit for human habitation, it's unfit for commercial use and not compliant with the code, it's vacant or being used for drug crimes or constitutes an endangerment to the safety, which are the four things it looks at. If there is a finding of fact that those, those things do in, in fact exist, then the court can issue a, will issue an order, can issue an order to, to require the owner to repair it within a specified period of time or to require the owner to demolish and remove the structure if it can't be repaired at a reasonable cost or some combination. You know, sometimes in the city of Lagrange, we've, you know, given the, the owner the, you know, the right to repair it, but, you know, when he's dragging his feet, we, you know, we've given the hard time, he's able, has to court issue an order, say that he has 15 days to, to, to apply, to apply for, you know, the, the proper permits to get, to get the building done. Otherwise, after that, the city or the county then could, can proceed to demolish or remove the structure. And so there's some combination of those. But the idea is to try to, one of two things, is to get, if they don't comply, such as if they say, well, I will repair it. If they don't, then you, you can come back and, and say, well, you haven't applied, haven't repaired it and then there can be some consequences. But what you're trying to do is to get up to you, repair it, bring it up to standards. Or two, if it can't be brought up to standards such as your fire, if the house has been burned down out there, is to demolish it. Or these houses right here, I, I don't know that, that these right here could possibly be repaired for near what the fair market value of the property would be, you know, based on what the tax accessory is, is looking at. Now, if you, if a homeowner is not available or the homeowner or if nobody is, you know, will do this, you can, the county can certainly demolish it or repair it for that matter, but probably, you know, more than likely, more often than not, you look at the demolition of it. You can recover the cost for repair of it, of it or the demolition. And that constitutes a lien against the property. And that includes all, all costs of, that we incur to do it, not only just to tear it down and then, and removing it, but would include all the, any cost of appraisal, if you had to go that far, the attorney's fees, anything else. And that lien becomes a, a lien against the property. And that lien is superior to all other liens, superior to mortgages, superior to mechanics liens, anything else except one. And that's taxes. The county and state taxes. And so the, and the tax commissioner has the authority, upon your request, to, to levy and sell the property, just like the tax commissioner can in a tax foreclosure sale when somebody does not do that, does not pay the taxes. The amount of the, the levy in sale would be the amount it costs you to bring the action and take the remedial steps to demolish the property and whatever else you have to, you have to do. And that remains a permanent lien until such time as the property is sold. It doesn't make a difference as, as long, if the taxes in the, are not paid, then, then certain, you can, the tax commissioner will levy and say, I'll do, sell this as well as the tax on you.
In fact, it comes with reserve price to cover taxes that are owed and what you're calling owed.
Yeah, yeah.
With the lien amount, it's subject to interest charges as well?
Yeah.
Because I would foresee some of this property to stay in, like, for twenty years.
Yeah, it's that, you know, you demolish them and, you know, and you've got, you've got the lien and you sell them, you know, and you, you know, you probably...
The interest would accumulate.
Yeah, yeah, just like it would otherwise. So that is, you know, in a nutshell, the procedure. You know, the idea is to try to, try to, to hopefully lead people, not require, lead people to, to keep things like this from, from happening. You know, somebody is, is wandering around or kids are running around, are wandering around and exploring and, and they decide they're gonna walk in and see what this house looks like and the floor falls in like on shillelagh one, you know, the floors are beginning to go or, you know, if there's any electricity, if you look at numbers that there's, it's probably get yourself electrocuted in the heart. Unfortunately, some people don't want to do that. You know, we're not trying to make, and this is not an ordinance that tries to make everybody, you know, make that, you know, house, you know, house look like a, a, you know, in the same condition that the White House is, is in or some sort of, you know, super nice place. It only applies when it's unfit for human habitation.
Safety issues.
Safety issues.
Can I back up a minute?
Yeah. And it's also, you know, it, it goes to commercial and industrial businesses as well that, you know, that are like...
Can you foreclose on just this lien though? You can't if it's not backacted. So the interest should not, you know, like, long term because eventually you'd be, you know, unsellable because of the, because of... Yeah, but you need to have some kind of timeframe that within X amount of years will close on.
Well, yeah, you can foreclose on it, you know, you can sell it. I mean, that's your call, what's the one you do there?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Would this also apply to abandoned mobile homes?
I think it would. It's a structure.
The cities have the zoning follow quite a bit. They follow the Harris County zoning as far as most of their community development work. Could they use this to apply or would they need a separate ordinance?
They would need a separate ordinance. But if they have one similar to this, then, you know, we could still handle, handle theirs. Because all these, you know, these are basically the same, same statute applies, you know, to, to, to the cities as well as does the county. So if they, you know, adopt something, you know, very, very similar to this...
Make this and just change a few things to make it the cities.
Yeah, this, if you look at it, is, is only for unincorporated areas in Harris County. So, you know, we couldn't put it down for shallow and find out where we all were happening, but they could if they wanted to adopt a similar ordinance and then we could enforce it like we can.
And I'm, I wasn't quite sure whether this related to land that was labeled A1 or labeled or did not, or it only involved A1 if there was a dwelling on it.
Well, it's, it's, it's not geared to, to a particular zoning, zoning classification. It's, it's anything because we have some, we have some houses that are zoned, that are zoned A1 that are, that are uninhabited. But if, if that, if that house is, it may be uninhabitable and you restore a cave and it's using it as an agricultural use, it is exempt. So it does not apply to, you know, one zone or another zone. It, you know, we're only looking at is, is whether or not it's, it's fit, unfit for human habitation regardless of what zone it's in. It could be in a, you know, an A1, it could be in a putt, a resort, where, you know, it makes no difference. And as long as it, it meets this definition that provided in the ordinance in the Georgia code and the court finds that, then the court can, can order regardless of where it is. But if it's a agricultural exception, then certainly it's not going to be, that's something that cannot be, can't go out to those, those buildings. I can certainly understand that because all kinds, you've got all kinds of, you know, old farmhouse that are used for, for agricultural uses. Appeal rights, if the property owners are dissatisfied, then of course they, you know, they got a right to appeal to spirit court, Harris County, for, I think it's a de novo here, spirit court. That is kind of, kind of it in a nutshell with the, the unsafe building ordinance. But I, I really would urge you to take a, take a look at it because when, when folks over in community development call and say, well, we've got, we've got this kind of a structure or that kind of a structure, then we, I'm a little hamstrung in being able to enforce what we need to enforce. Greg and I have talked about this numerous times that we need to, you know, go forward with it. And I think this one, like I said, is, you know, a benefit of what we've used in Lagrange and Hogansville and use on a daily basis and it has worked, worked extremely well. Sometimes like, sort of like you said a little while ago, you, you, the first one, you see, you get out the first one and then everyone there after says, my Lord, what if he do that to that one, what's he gonna do to mine? And so, but, you know, we're not, you know, we're not out there to, to, just to have, make these, make our citizens, you know, to finish in every, in every case. Even our, even our code violations, our zoning violations, you won't know the number of times we beg people to do it. And they, you know, and only when they, you know, refuse or do we file a, any type of action in magistrate court just to enforce the zoning ordinance and, or the building ordinance or, you know, junkyard ordinance. Those are, those are, you know, are the last result. Certainly we think these would be too. You can certainly, you know, you can get more cooperation out of somebody if you're working with them when you can't work against them. But if they say no and, or we can't find them or wherever the case may be, we've got a big stick here if we have a, have an ordinance.
Well, based on a number of complaints that I've had there, almost forty years, I'd like to see us move a bit with this. A lot of complaints.
I'm, I'm in favor as well. I don't want to regulate how high people's grass is.
Yeah. Well, you know, that's, that's not something I put in this ordinance.
And they're gonna have a problem with that.
Yeah.
There's one thing you have here, John, it talks about, this is a section five, 150, talks about structures in which drug crimes should be committed. I don't know that for a five, if, if we're gonna leave that in there, I'd like to have some, some confirmation from the sheriff's office, you know, letter or something, saying that, you know, this is a problem in our county. You're gonna, we're gonna be saying that, you know, we're doing this because of this five, I just want to make sure that, that we have it confirmed.
You know, it may, it may be some of those are, are more related or inside the city limits, but does not say you can still be selling, you know, using drugs, you have something else and you're a drug house. You know, I, I don't know that, you know, in Lagrange or where they're, or Hogansville, maybe, maybe at most once or twice over the past few years we've used it, but it's, you know, it's rare that, that you're gonna find something like it. I think that was probably meant more for some of our larger, larger municipalities, urban areas to give them some, some way to tell, to get these, get the property owners to get rid of these structures where they are selling drugs and beating drugs and shooting up and that kind of stuff.
At the bottom of page 10, it says, true county issue.
Eagle, Eagle live lying is already included. Pointed that out to me. So we'll make that change. And then there was another, another type of, I think, set we came up with and somebody came up with. somebody came up with.
It's seven, the first one.
Yeah, it should be, in order to, repair should be repaired.
One way I've addressed, or seen it addressed for the drug issue is that there's X number of, say, three, the term drug complaints, convictions, and for instance, within a certain period of time, year, eighteen months, whatever, then, then you can move in and force them to drop.
So you've got some.
Correct.
All right. Jim, do you, do you have that too?
Yes.
Okay. So unanimous consensus.
All right, we'll just put it on, put it on the first, next agenda for a first read. I'll, I'll make those corrections and I'll call the sheriff and see what he's got to say.
All right. Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate that, Sean.